Thank you, sir.
I can?
Yes, sir.
All right, we will reconvene now and for citizen comments. We'll open up for citizen comments, please address the board by stating your name, master of district, and limiting your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone signed up wishing to address the board?
No, sir.
Anyone online wishing to address the board?
No, sir.
Anyone present that have an opportunity to sign up? All right, we will move forward to the approval of the August 23rd, 2023, and August 28th, 2023 minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those? Any questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, on the final joint school board meeting minutes, I believe, Mr. Lewis and I were both in attendance and both voted to adjourn at the end. So if we could make that correction, so instead of showing us absent for the vote.
So is that a motion to approve with the change?
Well, unless someone else has any other changes, but that's the only one I've found.
All right, so that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Next up, we have consideration of school appropriation, Mr. Harrison?
Yes, the total school appropriation amounts to nineteen million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Part of that is for Fund 50, which is comprised of one million, eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars in new grants, and one million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-six in carryover grants from FY23. And Fund 70, about the majority of it, fifteen million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and fourteen, is comprised of the, for the Rockbridge Innovation Center, and that amount does include the contingency budget, which is, has been removed from the bond, but it is included in the appropriation. So if it's needed. And then also for Fund 70, a carryover from FY23 for the Mountain D's School, H Mac, which was one million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Any questions for Mr. Harrison? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the school appropriation?
No move.
In a second.
One second.
All right. Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And Chair votes yes as well. Next up, we have consideration of county appropriation resolution, Mr. Harrison?
Yes, the total bills for this period is a hundred and seventy-five thousand, seventy-six dollars and forty cents, and additional appropriations is five hundred and three dollars from insurance reimbursement. And that's all.
Any questions for Mr. Harrison? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the county appropriation?
Move.
In a second.
One second.
All right. Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Next up, we have consideration of declaration of surplus. And Mr. Harrison, believe you're up again.
Yes, we have several items. One is a, we're requesting the surplus to existing plotter and community development. As you recall, we have purchased a new plotter from the capital purchases fund for their office. The remaining items, one of them is a speed trap, used speed trap trailer, and the other nine are sheriff vehicles with high mileage, and in some cases, multiple mechanical issues with, with that. The Town of Goshen has requested one of the vehicles in this resolution, the 2013 Ford Explorer, be donated to them for official town use. And other items would be placed on online auction.
Yes, for Mr. Harrison's statement there, the Town of Goshen had asked some time ago, may, maybe, maybe been a year ago, just as vehicles were getting towards surplus, if there was any way that we might be able to help them, so the county garage has identified that one vehicle, number five, I believe, on, on the list as, as a potential item, so I was hoping to ask the board to, to strike that from, from this resolution and let that be donated to the.
Do you have a substitute resolution?
Okay.
I should have mentioned that.
That's a good question.
I don't think we have to remove it. I think we still need to be on the resolution. It's just.
The resolution is correct, is in front of you. You will note that the, the 2013 Ford Explorer has been moved down to the bottom. It is a letter L, and, and this revised resolution does authorize the county administrator or designated to facilitate legal transfer of that unit to the Town of Goshen. And then on the reverse side of that, the remaining items in there is the same, they, they are to be disposed of via online auction or other auction to the highest bidder. Any other discussion on that? Mr. Lewis, is that a motion?
Yes, with that, with this resolution here in front of us, yeah, I, I move to approve the resolution.
There's a second. All right. Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. Next up, we have consideration of true by Hilton Performance Agreement, Ms. Flint?
Chairman, member of the boards included in your package is the True Hilton Tourism Zone application. As you're aware, the Route 11 corridor was designated as a tourism zone, therefore allowing the True Hilton, which is under SHRI,
True.
Chev Inc. to apply for tourism zone incentives. So that is included in your package, is the application that was applied, where they applied, and then we had an additional incentive to help with the construction of the entrance of that project of ninety-three thousand, and all of that is included in your package. There's the project parameters for the True Hilton, which includes the initial investment over five years, along with the number of jobs that will be there, which is thirty-five jobs, thirty full-time equivalent, and then the total investment of four million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars. The incentive package for the tourism zone is a total of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, and then the additional ninety-three thousand for the road construction totals an incentive package of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. And that is included in your, in the performance agreement the EDA approved last Monday, and that breaks down how the incentives will be paid out over the five-year period.
Any questions for Ms. Flint? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt a resolution? The performance agreement? In a second.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have an update on fire and rescue response rates. Chief Ramsey?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Letting get some things up here. So as Mr. Suter mentioned a few minutes ago, this is more of a report of an annual review for FY23 numbers. And I do have Captain Andrews with us this afternoon that heads up our training department in case there's any questions that, that may come up in that realm, in case he, have him on standby to answer any questions that if, if need to. So I will kind of get started. There's twenty-four slides in this presentation, so we will, some are just pictures, but we'll kind of start off with the service breakdown for FY23. Again, you can see, based on, based on this, this slide here, EMS, which is the eighty percent or eighty-five percent of what we do throughout the county. This, this particular graph is system-wide. This is through our, what we call our active 911 system is where this information comes from. So this is any information that comes into the CAD and is pushed out to the system. So this includes the cities and, and the county as well. So you can just kind of see there how that breaks information down. Uh, is the biggest part is what we do is EMS, fire, and hazardous, a lot of the hazardous causes coming in from the interstate. That's how that's kind of broken down there. The next is just a map of where our, our rescue squads are located throughout the county, just to give you an idea. Is, all of you all know, but I felt like this would be a good, a good chance to just revisit that and, and have a visual of where, where our service areas are, and again, just like the rescue squad, is where the fire departments are located within our system. The next slide is the fire calls that are broken down for our county agencies, and you can see there's a lot on this graph, but it, it, it breaks down the, the total calls, the total, total response, again, for FY23. Delayed response and FTR percentage is the, is the, the yellow line there that, that you see. Total fire calls for FY23, again, this is just county departments, was twenty-seven hundred and fourteen responses for calls for service. The next is the rescue squad calls for service. And these are just our county rescue squad agencies, and total calls for service for FY23 was twenty-five, or two thousand, five hundred and twelve. And again, that graph is, is similar there. This slide is the, the two city departments that we have in our, in our system, and this actually breaks down the number of responses countywide, City of Lexington, City of Buena Vista, and then the yellow line there is the total, the total responses. Kind of, kind of together. You can see there that, that Lexington EMS is, is got the majority of the calls throughout our system. Buena Vista is, is a close second. Is there? This next slide is just kind of a map, kind of a 3D version. It's kind of hard to tell on here. This is more for you in your packet, just to kind of get a visual of where the incidents take place throughout the county in, in like a ten-thousand-foot view. Switching from the call responses a little bit, this just provides you an update on our paper call program that we do. This first slide is how, how it shakes out quarterly. And you can see that it's, it's actually five quarters on here, because we're always, when it comes down to the fourth quarter, we always are, are having to play catch-up how, how the fiscal year works to make sure that we catch every, catch everybody up as far as, as in the budget and payroll is concerned. So that's why there's, there's five quarters on that. So you can see it's pretty consistent throughout, throughout the time. And, and we're still continuing to be consistent on the, on the annual review since we got started of what's, of what the total, total is projected to be. You can see there that we're projected to be around eighty-eight thousand this year for the, for the paper call program. These next few slides are, is a breakdown of where we have career staff in the volunteer stations. The first one is, is Glasgow Rescue. The, the gray bars indicates the, the time that our staff are on duty, six A to six P. And then the yellow is from six P to six A. So you can see, see that breakdown there and, and the difference in the total calls during, during those particular times, timeframes. This is Fairfield. And if you all have any questions, like me to stop, feel free to jump in. And you can see Carst Creek, the difference there with Carst Creek's time, number of calls during the day, because as you all know, we cover three areas in Carst Creek during the day. They're automatically dispatched to, to Goshen and Effing area from, from six A to six P. So that's why the daylight calls are, are that much more.
Chief Ramsey, I, I just would like to note, I think last year, around November, December timeframe is when we talked with Glasgow Rescue and was looking at your numbers from December through April appear to be much better. So I'd just like to say thank you to the Glasgow Rescue Squad for stepping up to the plate and, and working harder at that.
Yes, sir. Doing it. And, and the statistic clearly shows that, and are, and are still doing a great job. Uh, so this, this kind of graph, again, for FY23, this comes out of our active 911 system. It's a third-party service that we have, comes out of the CAD and actually what alerts our responders through an app on our phone. The red indicates the busiest hours of our entire system, again, county, cities, all put together, and the busiest hours of, of, or the most active hours for calls. Based on the information is from eleven AM to, to four P during the day. This is strictly based on times of, of the 911 calls that come in. The next few slides is, again, since April 1st, as you are aware, we started the, the county ambulance at nighttime. This is just a breakdown of, of the calls that, in, in situations that our staff has, has ran and, and working well. One of the things that's in the next slide, you can look at is that are canceled. So the, the two biggest numbers is either transports or canceled prior to arrival. Cancelled prior to arrival is thirty-eight percent to the Chairman Daniels comments. This is a, a good thing. As I was telling the Public Safety Committee, this means that we're, our, the county staff is getting canceled prior to arrival on scene, which means that some of our rescue squads have gotten out. If we have been dispatched to assist them, then another agency has gotten out and, and been able to handle the call, which puts the county ambulance back in service and ready for, for additional response. So so I can still consider that a positive.
Are they canceled by the responding crew?
Yes.
But are, does responding, as soon as they check out of their building, do they cancel them, or once they're on scene?
It just depends on the situation. Sometimes if it's a, a general illness type call, the, just use Rescue or Glasgow Rescue, I was going to say Rescue Three, that's their company number, but if they get out and it's a general illness call, they have a crew to handle that, then they would put fifty-six in service. But if it's a serious call, like a cardiac arrest or a traumatic event or something, they may wait till they get on scene to cancel them, to ensure that they have the proper personnel or enough personnel to, to handle the situation. So everyone is, is a case by case. This slide here is duty officer response data. Duty officer is typically myself. Deputy Chief Moore, Captain Andrews backs us up sometimes. So during the year, these are the calls that, that we respond to. And you can just see, see those numbers there. Moving on from responses to some training highlights within the department, again, Captain Andrews hid, hid this department up. So in FY23, we conducted the high school EMT course. The regular EMT course, we also did, as you are aware, an accelerated EMT course is what we, what we call that. That was kind of like another chance to, to be able to go through reports again, to be successful. Thirty-two CPR courses, sixteen continuing education EMS courses, and, and to stop the bleed presentations. On the fire side, you can see there's a whole list here, Fire One Two, as we do every, every year, that's an annual thing. Basic pump operations, rural water supply, some May Day courses, this May Day courses, if they teach that if a firefighter becomes in an emergency or gets trapped in a house or a situation, other firefighters are trained to then go in and rescue them. So that's, it's a pretty intense course. Lot of manual labor with that, because you're physically carrying folks out, dragging them out, doing different techniques and things like that. The driver pump operator, these are classes, basic pump, rural water supplier, and driver pump operator involve training and becoming certified to drive fire apparatus and engines. Hazmat operations, the crew leaders, the leadership series. The EVAC is the emergency driving course, and then fire instructor, fire officer, and then fire officer two. And like I say, we've had all these in-house during FY23.
Chief Ramsey, is, is the, the rural water supply training, is that the, using like dry hydrants or?
Dry hydrants or going to a water source, a river pond and things like that. And then using different fire apparatuses to, to pump into each other and then fly on a fire. So additionally, uh, uh, in addition to the certification courses, during, during last year, we conducted several training sessions, live fire evolutions in an acquired structure that we acquired that was well-attended by a lot of departments, career staff, all of the career staff between our department and Lexington. Fire Department actually went through a, a number of training evolutions. That was well-attended. And then other, other projects that the training, training staff have done is implemented a learning management system. So that our career staff, when they're on duty, they can get their continuing education hours along with training. If there's something that Captain Andrews wants them to train on, a different topic for the week, for the month, or something, he uploads it, and while they're at the station, they can take it. It's all tracked and also get continuing education hours for that. Captain Andrews also constructed, as you all know, the storage space at the office there. When we, when we transitioned to the twenty-four-hour staff, we have actually constructed the two separate sections, one for storage for gear, and then the other parts, the other section of that is actually going to be used now that we're doing for the next couple of years, the high school EMT at our, at our office, because of the renovation of the Innovation Center. The other half is being used as part of a classroom as well, skills where they can go out and, and practice certain skills with patient movement and management and things like that. So it's worked out really well. All that was done in-house minus the electrical work. So we're just going to Captain Andrews for, for hitting that up. Upgraded some CPR equipment, and then also transitioned into a new EMT curriculum to meet the national EMS service education standards.
Chief Ramsey? Another question on the live fire training in acquired structures? Do we have a? Is that something we do regularly? Do we have a, a list of acquired structures?
No, sir. So that was donated to us.
So that, and that could be, in other words, somebody could donate an acquired structure?
Absolutely. And that happens periodically, a couple of times throughout the year. If someone has a residence that they buy a piece of property and have a house on it that they either don't want it there or, or want to rebuild, there's a process that we have to go through and a policy from the Department of Fire Programs that we have to follow. But this one particular acquired structure was a cinder block house. Well, may, not, not maintained, but the, the framing and structure was really good, so we were able to do a lot of training, had a basement that we could simulate a lot of things, and firefighters going through, through the floor, things like that. And the first half of the evolutions was with fake smoke, like a smoking chute. And then we were actually able to, following all the policies and stuff, we were able to do live fire training inside of the residence. Like I said, it was well-attended. And from time to time, other departments throughout the county have structures that they've given to them that, that we, you know, it's typically when we do that, we invite everybody to come to, to, it's, it's, it's really good training when you have that, that real world experience. A couple of other things that I felt like, we, we recognize the last board meeting of our lieutenant promotions. I haven't, Thomas does not know that I was going to really mention this. But with him here to answer any training questions, I also felt it important to note that in addition to teaching all of these classes and managing this, he also has attended and successfully completed the forty-hour emergency management course put on by VDIMM recently, and also within the last, within the last year has completed not one, but two additional associate degrees on his own while doing all these things. So wanted, wanted you all to be aware of that. And then, as you all know, Lieutenant Watts is now running in, in the main instructor for the high school EMT program. He was also obtained as an instructor, obviously, but also was re, recognized by National Registry for twenty years as an active instructor. So that's a pretty, pretty big milestone for our staff. So I'm going to make this recognition. Some other things that we've done throughout the year, this is more on the emergency management side of the duties of the house that we have, and these, again, just things, Deputy Chief Moore handles biggest part of these. But just to note, we always prepare for the hurricane season, as you, you all get the updates. There's annual reports that we have to do for VDIMM. We assisted with logistics for large events that's held in the county, Bling's Over Rock Bridge, the fair. And Kevin also participated in a functional exercise to test our locality's ability to manage emergencies when needed and things like that. We manage the, the shelters and keep up with those lists and things like that. So any other questions?
Do you, uh, I know one time many years ago, we, we had some scenario training in the county, such as like a train derailment with toxic material or something, where all agencies in the county, it was all a Saturday, Sunday type operation. Do you do any of that?
We haven't done a large-scale exercise in, in quite some time. I think the last one was an actual, an active shooter exercise in the high school. We had, we really hadn't planned any since, since COVID and all that kind of stuff, but it is something that we would probably, I can probably see coming in.
That was, would be my next question. Do you train any with the sheriff's office for like active shooter type?
Yeah, we actually have, Lieutenant Watts works with the SWAT team a lot, keeping them trained on their EMS skills, and then we also, he also trains with them in real life, not real life scenarios, but made-up scenarios when, when they're training. So yeah, they, we work with them a lot.
One, one last question for you. Now, let you go. I noticed several departments or, or agencies are well above our fifteen percent failure to respond. What's the plan of action for those?
Well, we've been, we keep monitoring that, talking with those agencies. As you know, we've been working with Effing over the last several months and working on a policy that's been put in place for them as far as their funding. Have a, a sliding scale of the annual, what the cost per call that is deducted off of each call that they miss. We have implemented that with Effing. And this is the first month that's been implemented, so.
And that's over their performance? This happens to their allotment? This is imposed on their allotment?
Right.
I'll state too, that also, one thing that has been implemented, and, and you mentioned Carst Creek, and you know, when they, when it gets to a certain point, sometimes the chief implements an automatic dual dispatch for, for some of these areas.
Well, Effing Jerry is on a dual dispatch.
That is correct.
Hey, Chief, on your slide of the system-wide call for service locations of blue dots. You know, some obviously out, outside Rockbridge County.
Yeah, so a lot of those are, you can see some in Bath County where those are just calls for assistance where they may not have during the day, if, if they're not getting out close to the county line, then like Goshen would be dispatched. Some of the other incidents that we have is in Amherst and Bedford on Swiftwater incident, some of those are outside of the county. And then Parkway, depending on where that is, they can come in outside of the county.
And Acosta's the same, you know, as, as Bath, yeah, right. I just, it's, it just wanted that note.
And likewise, there are times where they, those counties come in and provide assistance. We do have Natural Bridge in Glasgow, actually have a first due small area that's just inside the Motto Top County line because they're closer and, and right there on the line that they go through.
With the county ambulance twenty-four hour service that's running now, nine-one-one from six PM, I guess, to six AM. Looks like since it's been in, it's running like on average twenty-five calls a month. Is that what you expected? It seems to me that's low and it should be more.
Well, so some of that is the, the the area that they're covering. So we're only covering second due to Glasgow. We're only covering second due to Buna Vista and Lexington and the second due areas to the Fairfield, first due area that, that Buna Vista Rescue was second due. So with the call numbers being low like that, like I say, I think that's a good thing that we're we're, we're available and, and that just means that the the, the other volunteer agencies and even Buna Vista Rescue are, are able to get out and, and answer their calls, but they're all there. But we're, we're there and ready to, to back them up if needed.
My question is more, should we expand the area or look to assist on eighty-one? So our volunteers don't have to, I mean, we're, we're paying these career staff. We want them to be answering calls. I mean, certainly we want them to be there when our residents need them. But we also, we just don't want them to be sitting there. We want them to answer calls.
We, we can certainly look at that numbers. I think that one of the things i- is I mentioned when we started this is we, we didn't know what we didn't know. And I think it, once we get several months worth of data and then we can go back and, and and the public safety committee, we've talked about that a couple of times, is the, what area they're going to run. We've had discussions about running them out to the west end, but there's, there's some, some parts of that, it's, it's, it's difficult to run to, to, to run by Lexington. When we know that, you know, Lexington's going to be five miles closer, then we in turn would, would back Lexington and mess up. You know, i- if needed, but, but we're certainly, as we continue to gather that data, we can look, look at making changes to the, to the program. Any other?
Your total number of calls for the twenty twenty-three? Is that an increase or decrease from previous years? Change?
Typically, it, it increases a little bit each year. For FY twenty-three, we wasn't, we wasn't far off from FY twenty-two. And, and that's probably a good graph that I probably should have put in there, but I didn't. And I can follow that up to show the last several years of numbers. I can follow that up.
You have a question? Thank you, Chief Ramsey. Appreciate all you do for our citizens. All right, at this point, we will move to the public hearing. Rockridge County application for zoning text amendment to modify section six zero three eight dot zero zero to provide a licensed preschool childcare center as used by special exception in the agricultural transitional zoning district, Mr. Sladen?
Yes, at the August ninth, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting, that was the regular scheduled meeting. The planning commission discussed and directed staff to advertise for a public hearing to modify section six oh three of the regulations to provide for licensed preschool and childcare centers as a use by special exception in the AT zoning district. Currently, per section three oh two point thirty-seven of the regulations, a childcare center is defined as any facility operated for the purposes of providing care, protection and guidance to a group of children separated from their parents or guardians during a part of the day only and meeting the license requirements for childcare centers of section sixty-three point two dash seventeen oh one of the vote code of Virginia as amended. Currently, we have this provision in the A two zoning district, but we do not have the same provision, the provision of allowing this type of use in the A two zoning district. But, but ironically enough, we do not have the same provisions in the AT zoning district. So essentially what propelled this forward is we had two or three, at one time, we had two or three people, organizations, if you will, approached the county and wanting to do a childcare center in the agricultural transitional zoning district. And we did not, we currently do not have a path forward for them. With that being said, the purpose of this is to provide this use as a use by special exception in the AT zoning district. So at the September thirteenth meeting of this, this month, the planning commission held its public hearing and has recommended approval of the proposed zoning text amendment. So in your package, you have the notice of public hearing for tonight's meeting, of course, and then the draft zoning text amendment that just added section six oh three point, six oh three point oh three dash twenty-one. Again, licensed preschool slash college childcare centers.
Any board questions or comments from Mr. Sladen? All right, thank, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up wishing to address the board?
There is not, no sir.
Anyone online wishing to address the board?
No, sir.
Anyone present wishing to address? All right, we will close the public hearing. And I'll ask if there's any board discussion. Hearing done, is there a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Ms. Ayers? Mr. Line?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yeah.
And Chair of Arts, yes, as well. Thank you, Mr. Sladen. All right, now.
Like I say, excuse me, Chairman. Thank you, Office Committee Director, for bringing that forward and planning commission. We, we, childcare is needed here in Rockridge County. So anyway, we can do that in, in the right places is good. So the more options, the better, as I see. I believe in the special exception process as, as everybody knows.
And hopefully, you know, of the two or three we're talking to at the time, I believe one will, will come to fruition. So that, I think well worth it. So you might be seeing a childcare center in the agricultural transitional zone by special exception in upcoming months.
Next up, we have an update on the broadband grant applications, Mr. Sir.
Yes, as the board knows, we had one successful body grant application a couple of years ago. And in the last two, we've kind of been stymied. We've just been unsuccessful in the last two rounds. In two thousand twenty-one, we partnered with Bark Connects and Rana for a solution that would have reached over ninety percent of the unserved households and businesses in the county. Our twenty twenty-two applications, which again, one was the Bark Connects and then the other one was a new one with Bright Speed or formerly Century, Century Link. Were designed to reach all unserved locations in the county with the exception of some very long drops, which we plan to to use another federal program called LECAP. One of the primary factors we were not awarded last year became pretty clear when you looked at the, the scoring and compared it with the, the scoring from other localities was cost efficiency of the project, despite the fact that the board committed approximately ninety percent or three point nine million dollars of its ARPA funds as a match, in addition to large grant matches from our partners who I just mentioned. Fully forty-one percent of the grant scores in that judgment was attributed to that cost per passing. And it, it just simply costs more to build fiber in mountainous rocky terrain than it does in the Piedmont and the tidewater regions where much of the, the available funding went. And I will note that there wasn't a, a lot of funding. The first, the, the, the big round of body was in two thousand twenty-two and there was over seven hundred million last year. There was not nearly that much. It was about, I think, fifty-five or sixty million dollars available. So again, we, we kept digging. The moment we found out we weren't awarded for the last round, we went back to work. And I want to report on the, the, the main sources of funding that we've, we have found and plan to apply for in two thousand twenty-three. The first one is the Federal Community Connect Grant Program. And it has a max award of about five million dollars and it must be for a contiguous area. It can't be islands of areas. Bark examined the areas they'd applied for in the past and selected the Colliers Town areas, the best candidates for maximum leverage of the grant funds available of, of that five million. We assisted in their application in June. This wasn't a county application. It was an application or not even a partnership application. That was, this was an ISP or internet service provider application. And we're awaiting word from the grant reviewers to see if that will be awarded. Feel good about that one, but then again, I felt good about some other ones too. So I'm not going to celebrate anytime till we see something writing. The county's contribution to that grant would be making Lake Robertson the office, doing some some, some minor adjustments there to make it available as a quote unquote community center. Obviously, it wouldn't be a community center. It kind of already is a community center. Anybody can stop by there. It's open all but two days of the year. But you had to have a community center designated where you could put two computers for people to use to be able to qualify for that grant. So that was our contribution there. The second opportunity is again, Virginia Telecommunications Initiative twenty twenty-four. It's essentially the same grant we applied for unsuccessfully over the past two years. Again, there's only approximately fifty million available statewide. And we plan to tweak our grant applications, learning from the last year's grant to gain as many points possible in the competitive scoring process. These grants must be applied for, as, as in the past, by localities and partnership within ISP. And we again plan to partner with Bright, Bright Speed and Bark. Public comment period allowed me to request more equity for funding in western, western Virginia counties in the scoring process. And matching funds will again be required. Applications are due in the middle of December.
Can I ask one question? Will other locality, the localities that have won those awards in the past, would, are we going to be priority over those? Localities have already won those grants.
That's been another sticking point with me that, you know, the, the first year, the, and I'll get a little bit in the weeds. The first year, the, what was considered unserved was twenty-five, three, twenty-five mags down, three up speeds. And then they said, once you apply, if you're awarded, don't come back to us. You know, you need to, if you say that you, this is getting you universal, universal broadband, don't come back. The second year, which was last year, they, it changed a little bit and I get this, I get this from the state. They, they, they moved the, the, the bar to one hundred down and twenty up. So someone that's not meeting that, even after the first year, could technically come back and apply. Now, again, there's only about fifty million dollars available. So.
People like us should be right.
So I will say this, one good thing that they left in that was in last year and it will again be in twenty twenty-four, to my understanding, is they will offer priority and preference to twenty-five, three and below. So if you got two applications, one of them is to get you from twenty-five, three to a hundred over twenty, then the, the preference is going to go toward you get more points if you're completely underserved. Right now, what they're saying is one hundred over twenty is underserved. Twenty-five, three is uncerved, is, is what they're saying. So there is going to be more priority.
Okay.
To unserved, which we have, you know, you, you personally know about this. I do as well. It's your house, so. Okay, the grants must be applied for by the localities and partnership with the ISP. We will again partner with Bark and Bright Speed. That's the plan. And then the, the other one is BE, the Broadband Equity Act. This is a federal program. And what I say it's the federal program, it's federal funds flowing through to the state. So earlier in the summer, the Commonwealth learned it would be receiving an additional approximately one point five billion with a B dollars in broadband funds. And the parameters for application are still being determined. But we do know that only providers, not localities, can apply for the, the BED funding. However, we will continue to work with Bark and, Bark and Bright Speed and perhaps other ISPs to assist in application. And these applications would also require a twenty-five percent matching funds required in this grant.
Now, is that twenty-five percent governmental funds or twenty-five percent of the ISP?
I don't think they, they care. If it's, if it's twenty-five percent, last year our grant application, I, I can't remember the exact numbers, but the county was putting in eleven percent of the total cost. And the ISPs were putting in, I believe, twenty-one percent. And, and then the grant was for the remainder. So we were, we were partnering with the, with the ISPs last year with that three point nine million dollars the board designated from originally from the ARPA funds. So I, I don't think they care wh- where it comes from. It's just got to be a twenty-five percent match. I did in both Bark and Bright Speed apply, plan to apply for the same areas they applied for last summer. There may be a few tweaks. Been talking with Bright Speed and Bark about some areas that potentially one of them might be able to pick up a little bit better with new knowledge than the other and just trying to coordinate that. So again, the, the goal is not to, not to overbuild one over the other. It's to get service to, to residents that don't have it. I, I did put in your package last year's application map for reference. This is a whole lot more work this year because it's four grants versus two. And, but we do hope that it'll increase the chance for success. Because we're, we're applying for the same areas under, under body as we are with BE. So we'll be applying for double. If we get one, we won't, we can turn the other one down. So we're just trying to double up everywhere we can to, to try to get that. I've one additional note I wanted to add. It's not included in your board report, but I did receive word late last week that Rana may also be applying in upcoming rounds, so. Their, their executive director contacted me with some, some specifics about what they, what they would like to potentially apply for. And again, whatever, whatever it is requires a match. So I just want to let the board and, and the general public know that, that are still struggling without broadband. That we're, we're doing everything we can to try to push forward with grant applications on behalf of the residents and businesses of, who are served or unserved or underserved.
Any questions from us there?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is where we'll interject the county attorney advertising, I believe, the personnel committee met. And has drafted I guess, a process for candidates to apply. Is that correct, Miss Hupman? You want to add anything to that?
It's just the, the ad itself, the board had asked to have the final ad brought back after review by the committee. The changes from what you previously saw have been tracked in one version and then you have a clean version attached. There weren't many changes, but, and I apologize for not getting this sooner, but we just met this afternoon before the meeting, so we thought we could get it, get the ad out by the first of October if, if this is suitable.
Personnel committee have anything to add? Need a vote on this or? A vote to pursue that or?
Yeah, that would be good.
So is there a motion to proceed with the ad? Where are we going to run the ad?
Uh, that's, go ahead. Sorry.
Well, yeah, I would, Ms. Hope would have in more insight into that, but I believe the traditional approach now is indeed is, is her preferred method. But, and then technically, Ms. Hupman has three sources or resources to, to post it on that is geared towards her profession of county attorneys. So we thought with those four options, that would, should generate some interest.
What are those three sources? I'm just curious.
I'm just curious.
Oh, one is the, what's called a, it's a local government attorneys association publication called the Bill of Particulars. The other would be on the local government attorneys association website. And then the LGA also has a listserv that is, it's divided. There's, there's the active forum and the another forum. And so it would be sent out via email on that listserv to all of the local government attorneys who are members.
Is that just in Virginia or?
Just Virginia.
So.
Yes.
Are we advertising outside the state or?
Um, I had not considered that, but if you'd like me to look at it, I sure will.
I, I think the further out you reach, the more likely you are to get more candidates, but.
We did have a little conversation about that and there, you know, as you know, Virginia's a Commonwealth and a, and a rural state and some, some other surrounding ones aren't.
And some are. Yeah.
We have to practice in Virginia too as well. Correct. I mean, you have to pass the Virginia law.
Right, of course.
But Maryland, certainly there are places that, that my lawyers might.
But I, I think, and I haven't had a chance to maybe discuss that with Ms. Hope, but that's the, the point of the, the indeed part, you know, the, the, the web presence that, you know, it's, it's going to go everywhere. Or why web.
There's also NACO that might provide a section on their website for publication of this and I'll look at that.
Sure, yeah.
Any other questions? Again, is there a motion to proceed with the advertising?
Yes.
Presented to you.
Yes, I make that motion.
In a second.
One second.
All right, Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And Chair of Oshas as well. Thank Personnel Committee for the work on that. Next up, we have Central Shenandoah EMS Council, Chief Ramsey, Blue's term expires October 1st. Is willing to be reappointed. Is there a motion to reappoint?
I move.
In a second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
And Chair of Oshas as well. And then we have the Rockridge County Public Service Authority, Mr. David Reynolds, term expires on October 14th. I don't believe he is able to serve any longer. Not sure that we have received any applications to this point. I believe Mr. Reynolds serves the South River District on that board. Would you be able to work to find someone for that?
Trying, I'm waiting here back in my gentleman now, so I need, we need to carry that over.
Okay, we'll just carry it to the next meeting. All right. Then we have the local board of building code appeals, Mr. Greg Mullen, term expires October 24th. Mr. Mullen is also willing to be reappointed. There's a motion to do so? In a second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And Chair of Oshas as well. Next, we have board comments. Mr. Lyons, anything for the board?
No.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes, tourism update. On Wednesday, we will review our candidates. So far, there are 11 candidates for the director of tourism and, and that position is still open. So maybe there are more by today, but on Wednesday we will begin that process. That closes me.
Mr. Day, you have anything? Mr. Lewis?
I do, I reported a few things over the Virginia Horse Center. The, just to say, we had, they had a board meeting today, so some of the highlights, there are still new shows coming every time, each year, the ranch sorting and team penning national championships will be held at the Horse Center in Virginia next month. There's a new.
Is that a new show?
Yes, ma'am, to, to the Horse Center. I, I couldn't say that it's new. Out it is, yeah, nationwide, but it's new to the horse. There's a, a new board member, Ms. Judy Miller from Newport News. She's a banker and an equestrian, obviously. Successful audit for the year. The, they're about to adopt a strategic plan. There was a little issue with Quorum today, but I think it's all set. So they're, you know, I think really working hard to stay organized and, and be efficient. One last thing was in work with local tourism. They got together a, a survey, did it with a company, I think called Qualtrics that was recommended to give them some data they already have, but I, I, I think it was just a new look at it. They hadn't, maybe hadn't done something in several years, but it just data on hotel rooms and why people come and how many nights they stay and this sort of thing. The, the real goal in that is to continue to develop relationship with the Virginia Tourism Corporation, which does provide funds, you know, for, for tourism related activities. And there have been a show or two lost to other states whose states are putting money towards prize money and, and that sort of thing, which makes a difference to the show when they're trying to figure where to allocate. So the hope is that we, we can, they can develop a better relationship with the, for a more in-depth relationship with Virginia tourism such that those decisions can be made pretty quickly. It's normally a very long application process, but when you're trying to book a show, you don't have so much time. So I, I think they're working towards that. That's, that's good. Bring more shows. That's all I have for that. Thank you.
Just a reminder, our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, October 10th. It goes on Monday, October 14th, our offices will be closed in observance of Columbus Day. And the executive committee met last week with the Rockridge County Public Schools, went over quite a few items. I guess the one that would most board members be interested in is, you know, they do have a state budget, but as of the time that we met on Thursday, they, they still had not received a capital. So still a work in process with their budget. Hopefully we'll have more information next month on that. Mr. Suter, you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Daniel, one other thing, while we're talking about moving meetings, I, I had neglected to remember that the November 13th meeting is also moved to the 14th, Tuesday, 14th traditionally, but my calendar didn't reflect that.
Is that for the Baker?
Reminder, yes. And then subsequent to that, I, I was going to, do we need to add something to the agenda for that, Mr. Suter?
No, as far as the proxy or the vote, not proxy. No, I, I looked at it. We don't have to give them anything until early November, so we've already added it to the next agenda. All right, that's the, what he's asking about is who the board appoints to, to cast a vote for the county in the Baker meeting.
Do you have the dates of that conference?
Yes, I think it's the 11th through the 13th.
No, I thought it was the 14th.
11th through the 14th.
There, there are activities on the 11th that, yeah, the main conferences, the, the 12, 13th, 14th.
Yeah, 12, 13th being the main days and then the 14th having committee meetings in the morning, the 14th would then therefore be the, the day of the board meeting.
You need, when do you need board members to let you know or?
I think it might be today.
Yeah, I needed to know today if you're staying there, but if you, if you, if you just want to go to the conference, I need to know sooner rather than later so that we can get you registered.
Mr. Huffman, you have anything? No further business, is there a motion to adjourn? To move? In a second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day? And Chair of Oshas as well.